Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Hamilton County Commission.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Thank you all. Stephanie Sumro Dumas, President of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. We will start as we always start with a silent prayer and when we complete that, if you, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The prayer. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Seconds.
Commissioner Sumro Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I don't know if, oh, he just came in. So we will, Mr. Knapp is here. So we'll start in the order of our presentations. We have several today. The National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is our first one. See, I moved it because I didn't think you would come. Yeah, you certainly can come up, yeah. And proclamation recognizing April the 10th through the 16th of this year, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Hamilton County Communications Center.
Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. They are the rarely seen but always heard professionals that provide the calm voice that help to mitigate critical situations in our community. Whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Hamilton County Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. This work exacts a commotive toll on the mental well-being of our employees.
And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. These professionals have worked countless hours beyond normal expectations with the common goal of making sure our 911 calls are answered professionally and in the most expeditious manner possible. They continue to play a vital role in working through the day-to-day traffic as well as the worldwide pandemic. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, gives due recognition to the public safety telecommunicators of Hamilton County Communications Center for their dedication and outstanding service to the community and extends their respect and gratitude for the service they render to Hamilton County.
Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the week of April the 10th through the 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and is signed by all of our commissioners. Congratulations.
Thank you. You've all been incredibly supportive of us over the last, you know, 18 to 24 months as we all worked through the pandemic. But especially, this is a token that I will take back to our employees and let them see that you understand the type of work that we're doing, how critical it is. You know, they had to modify their behavior, not just to protect themselves, but also to protect each other. I mean, the last thing in the world we wanted during a pandemic was to have our entire workforce decimated by this, you know, by this virus that would then, and further endanger the rest of our citizens when we couldn't answer their calls for emergency calls. And this type of job is not for everyone. There are very few of, and I'm gonna, I'm proud to say us, because I still do it, there are very few of us that are able to work this as long as I have. And 30 years that I started with the county in 1988, because of exactly as you said, there is a certain mental toll that is taken because you hear things that you really shouldn't hear and hear things that you can't un-hear in your mission to try to assist the citizens as quickly and as professionally as possible to get the first responders on the scene. And that's the number one priority. And despite the, just like everywhere has the staffing issues, we suffer from that. As you all well know, I've kept you posted on the critical nature of our work and the critical staffing levels that we currently unfortunately have. And yet nonetheless, the women and men there at my department continue to make personal sacrifices to make sure that those calls are answered as quickly as possible. So I'm very proud of each and every one of them of working through this. I'm very thankful to you for helping us work through this and providing us the resources that we need to be successful as a department. There's no question in my mind that you can directly tie back the quality of life to our communities based on the type of professional services that you provide in those absolute critical services such as the 911 system. And I offer sincere thank you for everything that you've done for us and continue to do. And we'll work, we will get through this, but I'm very appreciative for the recognition. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. This is just a small token of our appreciation. Looking forward to the expansion of the 911 facility.
We have 40,000 square feet of appreciation coming very soon.
So we'll come up and take a picture with you.
Get you guys together. The three, thank you so much.
And Bridget pointed out, and I neglected to mention that, that is a photograph of Bethany Daniels. Bethany Daniel was selected as our Dispatcher of the Year. She's a relatively young employee with less than four years of service, yet she has been one of our absolute cheerleaders who has been enthusiastic. She is encouraging of everyone else. She's taken on additional roles to help train folks, which is a challenge in and of itself. And nonetheless, every day has that exact smile you see is not something she just did for the photograph. That's actually, that's her nature, her personality. That's every day. And we're very proud of Bethany, and I just wanted a quick second to spotlight her. So thank you.
Just before you leave, Andy, I just want to say thank you. And, you know, it occurs to me that sometimes when we're out in the community, especially with students, and they don't really understand what county government does, one of the most obvious things that we do is the service that you guys provide. You know, everybody wants somebody to pick up that phone when they're dialing 911. And so there is a certain expectation, and you and your team have always lived up to that expectation even through a pandemic. So we are very, very grateful for your service.
Thank you very much. And we're, those exact young people, we're hiring. We are always hiring. This is a wonderful career-oriented opportunity. It's been a wonderful career for myself, for my wife, and for many other coworkers. You know, it's a vital function. It's not for everyone, but for those who are able to do it, it's been an absolute wonderful career, a very fulfilling career for me.
Yes, I just wanted to also join and say thank you. And thank you to all those that worked there. I got a chance to do the tour, and I'm glad that we're gonna be having a new facility with a new technology and all of the bells and whistles because we want to have the best environment as the individuals are taking these life and death calls. But I wanted to just highlight yourself because if we're short of staff or we're getting overflow calls, you're not the type of director to say, oh, man, give it to somebody else. You take off, I mean, you got the suit on today, but you take that jacket off, you roll up your sleeves, and you get to work yourself too. And I just wanted to highlight that because I think that says a lot about you, says a lot about being a leader of the team. When they see the director is willing to roll up their sleeves and get busy, it also inspires others. And so I just wanted to tell you that, say that publicly, the type of director that you are. You're a hands-on person. And, you know, like you said, if you gotta answer phones yourself to save a life, you're willing to do that. And just want to say we really appreciate that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We will move forward. We have a couple more proclamations. And this month is National County Government Month. Counties thrive in Hamilton County. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, parishes, and boroughs serving more than 315 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties provide public health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more.
Whereas Hamilton County, Ohio, and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, under the leadership of the National Association of Counties President Larry Johnson, NACO is demonstrating how counties thrive, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the coronavirus pandemic.
And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And whereas Hamilton County's Board of County Commissioners have also demonstrated how counties thrive in supporting our residents and businesses through the coronavirus pandemic as well as developing long-term resources to assure success during this time of recovery and rebuilding.
Therefore, now be proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim April 2022 as National County Government Month, and it's signed by all the commissioners. Thank you so much. And we have one additional proclamation, National Lineman Appreciation Day. Hello?
Hello.
Yeah, this is such an honor, just the thought of going up higher than two or three feet for me. It's like, just as I was saying earlier on our other proclamation, are you, are you actually a lineman?
So I was.
Okay. Okay, but that's okay. And thank you so much. Yes.
You know, work on the poles and invite the county.
Fantastic.
John's being humble. He's the Director of our Queens Gate Operations Center, and he leads a large team there that keeps the lights on in the city and the county, and does a great job. And, you know, just really appreciate this day to be able to celebrate them, all of our line workers, men, women, all who serve. They just do an amazing job to keep the lights on.
And so I'm sort of going out of order. I'm supposed to read the proclamation first, but I'm just, I would think linemen are basically humble people. I mean, to get up there and do what you need to do and take your life in your own hands. So let me read the proclamation, and then I'll let our other commissioners speak to it. This is a proclamation recognizing Duke Energy Linemen for their extraordinary service in Hamilton County. Whereas the profession of Duke Energy Linemen is steeped in personal, family, and professional tradition. And whereas Duke Energy Linemen are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to make the scene safe for other members of public and safety officials. And whereas these brave men and women work with thousands of volts of electricity high atop power lines 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to keep electricity flowing. And whereas, Duke Energy Linemen must often work under dangerous conditions far from their families to construct and maintain energy infrastructure throughout the state of Ohio and the United States. And whereas Hamilton County thanks Duke Energy Linemen for their extraordinary service daily and during severe weather and other impacts to Hamilton County. Therefore, now be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners honors Duke Energy Linemen for their excellent service to the citizens of Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the 18th day of April 2022 as National Lineman Appreciation Day, and it's signed by all our commissioners. Thank you for all you do.
President Reese, would you like to make?
I just want to say thank you for your service. And I think a lot of times, I think last night, for example, when thunderstorm hit, and certainly we get our text message to get prepared. And I think you'll be happy to know, I got my batteries and I got my, I got my flashlight, my batteries, and I make sure my phone is plugged up. But when the lights are out and people don't know where to turn, that's when, you know, the line, men and women show up like Spider-Man. You're up high and you get things going and get us, get us back on track. And so just want to really thank the line men and women who are out there in the danger while we're inside in the dark and sometimes making those calls. When are our lights gonna get on? But you do the work to get us back on the grid because we're off the grid when we go down. You get us back on the grid, get us back to work, get us back living with the lights on. So I just want to say thank you so much for your work.
Yeah, I also want to express my gratitude for the work you do. You know, we've been talking a lot about emergency work today. And, you know, in the event of inclement weather and storms, you guys are the ones responding to emergencies. And, you know, when you think about countries like the Ukraine where they've had power out and no water and no food for so long, you really start to think about how dangerous of a situation that is if we don't have individuals like you doing the work and making sure that we all maintain power, whether it's an inclement event or something other than that. But, you know, thank you for what you do. You know, you use the term souls on the poles. I've heard souls to the poles, Commissioner Reese, more than once. But souls on the poles, there's a whole new take on that. So, but I like the way you think about it because you obviously feel a great deal of responsibility for the individuals you're training. And we're very grateful for what you do and your leadership in this space. So thank you.
And I appreciate our willingness to go above and beyond when we go outside of Ohio. We always hear about our men and women going wherever the disaster is. So certainly appreciate that.
John, I know you've been down to the Carolinas a couple times with different hurricanes in Florida, and even in 2008 when we had the major hurricane come inland here in Cincinnati area. So I just want to say a very special thanks to Madam President Sumro Dumas, Commissioner Dreehouse, and Vice President Reese, you know, for this honor, this recognition. I know, John, you know, it takes us very personally. He's had a long career in being a lineman, working with the crews, leading them now. But he said on the way up here, we walked from our office at Fourth and Main, he said, I'm gonna take this back, I'm gonna put it up on the wall and show all of our line workers, you know, what the county feels about them. So that means a lot. I've only been in this role for several years, but I've got the pleasure to work with some great people at the county, our EMA Director. We text each other quite frequently. We keep in contact, the Administrator, Assistant Administrator, Eric Beck. We work together on a variety of projects, but top-notch group. And we just, this recognition means a lot to Duke Energy. So thank you.
Fantastic. We're gonna take a picture with you guys.
Are you sure? Trust me on this to send it to all you, or would you rather? Yeah. And I will, I will get the best light if I can, and do it a little closer. There we go. And he's got that to hold. All right, wonderful, right here. Thank you so much. Wonderful. Okay. Very good.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay.
Madam President, I just wanted to add real quick. So first of all, I very much appreciate you fitting this into the board's schedule. So I've been in emergency management for 22 years. And for 22 years, I know the first thing I do, I do several things when I hit the ground running. One is to develop a positive relationship with the local infrastructure providers. Duke Energy has been a phenomenal partner since I got here in 2015. When he says, "We text at all hours," we text or call at all hours. And they're phenomenally prepared as they can be company, and they're prepared to respond and fix whatever breaks in the county. And it's just, you know, I know Jeff and I, Administrator Ludo and I text a lot during large power outages. And so I'm constantly, not only is their website phenomenal, by the way, which is real-time data. So that's been a phenomenal change in power restoration process, but also just getting a clear and concise information from our contacts at Duke. Chad and I work closely together. I talk to them from, are you doing your tree trimming? To, are you ready for tonight's storm? To, how much are you leaving here if you're sending all these linemen to another state to respond to another disaster? And so they're just, as a company and as people, they're phenomenal. And then, of course, just so you know, it's not, it's not, it's not a one-way street. So we have helped them out a few times when they've, they've had trouble accessing a facility or something like that. We've partnered with our local communities to help them get access to some facilities that had some problems. So it's a two-way street, and it's just a phenomenal partnership. And I just, just can't ask for a better partner when it comes to making sure that people have the power they need in Hamilton County.
Thank you so much, Nick. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move forward for public comments. Probably gonna tear up some of these names. I can tell you already. Dan. Yes, what's your last name?
It's Reginald.
Regalod. Okay. All right, come forward. You have two minutes.
Oh, I was told I had three minutes. I was told I'd have three minutes.
Okay. Did somebody tell you that? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, great.
We'll go with the third.
I wanted to give a compliment before my time started. Can I do that?
Sure.
I just wanted to compliment Jeff and really some great employees who have helped give me some information, like Bridget over here, Lisa Webb, and there have been several others that when I've asked for things, they've gotten it to me quickly. Really appreciate it. Love the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
So why am I here? In July 2020, a lot of elected officials around the state of Ohio passed race resolutions that really have had a large impact on their constituents. I live in historic Glendale, beautiful, I think right up the road from you, President Dumas. And in July 2020, an African-American councilperson on her own created a study, and she found out without any public involvement that all 2,000 citizens in Glendale were racist, implicitly biased. The mayor allowed her to send that out in an email to the entire city, and the impact on the residents was terrible. Another incident I'm aware of is the State School Board in Ohio. In July 2020, they passed a resolution to condemn racism and advance equity. This policy allowed the State School Board to shut down all discussion at their public meetings on the subject of race. No one was allowed to even talk about it in any of their meetings. That policy was so bad that a lawsuit was filed against them. Board members were replaced. The Superintendent and President of the State Board of Education were replaced. The new resolution they passed to replace that racism resolution was called "The Academic Excellence for All Students." Can you imagine that? Excellence, not race, not equity. That brings me to the resolution that you all passed in July 2020 called "The Resolution That Racism Is a Public Health Crisis." I've had this resolution sitting on my desk now for two years. And let me review a few things about this piece of, well, paper. "Hamilton County Will Support Health Efforts That Are Centered on the Voice of Black Communities." Why just black communities? "Hamilton County Will Seek to Promote Racial Equity Policies That Prioritize the Health of All People, Especially People of Color." Why just people of color? So, gosh, the idea of segregation that's in this resolution, it's so 1950s. Let me remind you that you, just like everybody in this room, we were all born with the same rights given to us by God, and that was that we're all equal. And as elected officials, it's your job to represent all races. At some point, I knew somebody was gonna come, an employee or a vendor would come and talk to me about that, and that's happened. Two weeks ago, an employee in one of your departments contacted me to tell me that they were starting to be treated hostilely by your management team. They feel like they're being indoctrinated because they're white. They're starting to be told to join groups of library clubs to read racist garbage like Ibram X. Kendi. That's the one where when you say you're not racist, that means you're a double racist, if you can believe that. Your resolution has maybe starting to open the door to a hostile work employee for counties. My message is to you simple, don't let it happen. I don't think I need to explain to you what the words hostile, workplace mean. To all the 4,270 Hamilton County employees, whether they're black, white, or whatever they are, if any of you are being treated differently because of the color of your skin, and you're starting to feel like you're, you're being treated hostilely, I encourage you to contact me. My name is Dan Reginald. You can reach me at dan@empowertheletteruamerica.org. And if I can help you, I will. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jeff Capel?
Good afternoon. I was at the OKI Board Meeting earlier today, so I thought while I'm downtown, let's come by and have a chat with you all. I saw a few weeks ago, the Chairman of the Cincinnati Convention and Visitors Bureau talked about how we need to get a new arena in town. Now, I knew that was coming the second that that same organization named Jeff Birding to be their chairman. Birding didn't just walk in off a Greyhound bus and land into that role. He was specifically put there by some of the top 0.1% of Hamilton County to hit up taxpayers to build, to get us another Jeff Birding Stadium or Arena. Now, let's note that that arena is privately owned. So if the owners of that arena want to build a new arena or substantially refurbish- to build a new arena or substantially refurbish the current one, nobody's stopping them from doing so. They can do that anytime they want. So when, when Birding and Company talk about how we have decisions to make, what they're really talking about is how much money can we loot from taxpayers to subsidize a private business? And then another thing I wanted to hit on as well is we, we all heard the comments from Phil Castellini recently. And people can interpret them however they want. I'm not even here to say what exactly what I think he may have meant by it. But I wanted to point out that that is the tactic of stating that, you know, maybe sometime our team may land in another city. That's a common tactic that's used now when, when owners of sports teams want something. They can't use the tactics anymore of the 90s where teams would outright say, we're going to move if you don't give us what we want. People really bristle at that. So the tactic has evolved over the years to just dropping hints that things may happen if things don't go their way. I mean, it's important to point that out because as much as we need to understand the proven facts that stadiums do not generate new jobs, net new jobs, net new growth, net economic development, it's equally important to understand the tactics that they use to manipulate elected officials and the public to subsidizing their private businesses. So that's what I wanted to mention and just encourage that we all stay on top of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Bomani Tahimba, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to speak in support of the large event grant that's on the agenda that will benefit the Cincinnati Music Festival. A little bit about myself, I hold an event that takes place at the same time as the Cincinnati Music Festival. It's called Festival 513 on Freedom Wade, right in front of, right across from the stadium. There are vendors, food vendors, general merchandise vendors, louder than African American, local vendors as well. And that weekend is just a great event. It really gives Cincinnati an opportunity to shine. And so anything that would support that, the Cincinnati Music Festival, you know, I just want to say that it's a great effort. And also during that weekend, there's going to be the inaugural event for the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And all of those events in that one location is going to create an environment where people that come to our city feel welcome, they'll have things to do. And we have an opportunity to make Cincinnati shine even brighter that weekend with all of those events that weekend. So I'm in support of the large event grant, and I hope you all will be as well. And also my pastor, Pastor Casey Smith of Corinthian Baptist Church, he authorized me to speak on his behalf that he is also in favor of that grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone on? No one. Okay. All righty, we will move forward with comments and motions from the commissioners. I have a few things I'd like to bring up as far as what I have been doing, some of the things I've been doing. I went to Teller Elementary last Friday for the Children's Hunger Alliance and helped pass out meals for those young people that are going to spring break so they would have some food to last them. And then I was part of the Reds opening day. It was fantastic. The energy was fantastic. And we knew it would be because people have been waiting forever, you know, for that to happen. I also attended in Forest Park, there was a historical society there, and they wanted me to come because the Quality of Life Task Force, which was formed in 1990 back there, I was part of the, the co-founder for the Quality of Life Task Force. And they're looking at bringing it, starting it again with their new mayor, Mayor Aaron Brown. So they wanted to get some, some questions answered and some input as it relates to some of the things that we found it when we were there. I also wore blue for Child Abuse Month. Is it? Yeah, okay. With JFS. And so a lot of JFS workers were there. Commissioner Drehouse was there. And we wore blue. And I know you were hurting a little bit at that time, Vice President Reese, so you couldn't make it over there. In addition, I went to the Fair Housing Monthly Program, which is really their yearly program. And they talked about some statistics as it relates to housing and how we can improve the affordable housing, which is certainly a priority on our board. And then this morning, I said, I attended the OKI meeting, really interesting, Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana, transportation meeting. And they talked about all the monies that are going to be allocated for charging stations. Actually, they allocated. Eric, do you remember you? Here it is. I got it here. Well, we got 104 million, Ohio did. But the complete allocation is 7.5 billion from the federal government. And Ohio is getting, thanks Eric, 104 million. OKI itself is getting 3 million. And it's really, they are really committed to it. And in addition to that, there was a young man who came up to talk about the apps, the apps that they have for OKI, and how you can, you know, just get on, okay, I would encourage people to do it, OKI.org, and look at where locations for charging stations should be. It also had a, it analyzes safety in the trucks and the cars and where they're going and where the primary traffic is happening. And also, if you want to put your address in, it will analyze for you whether or not your house is a good place for a solar rooftop, or whether or not it's not a good idea. That's just a few of the apps that they have. And I, I found it quite interesting. We do have to pay a 20% match if we decide to get some of these charging stations. And that will end my report as for, as activities. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Yes, I have some little knee trouble right now, but hopefully everything will be going fine. Just wanted to say that last week, I actually woke up with a knee out and was able to get a shot and get to going to the National Action Network Convention where I was scheduled to speak. So was in New York last week, spoke at the National Action Network National Convention, had a chance to talk about some of the efforts that we have here in Hamilton County. They had people from all over the country. Got a chance to talk about our 513 relief bus, bus efforts, the efforts that we've been able to also do with some of the relief dollars and some of the best practices, among other things that I was able to speak about. I was also able to chat briefly with Secretary Marcia Fudge, who is the Secretary of HUD, and was able to talk with her briefly about, obviously, the needs of bringing more to Hamilton County and also our efforts in putting together an affordable housing plan and bring, doing it in a collaborative way. And she seemed to be very excited to see that we were collaborating among different groups and organizations. And also invited her to come to Hamilton County. So I'll be still bugging her about that. But I was just happy to be able to talk to her directly. Also was there with the Secretary of Transportation, Pete Budapest, and was able to talk just briefly, mentioned Brent Spence Bridge. So it's always good when you've got some FaceTime, even if it's not too long, but was there with them at the National Action Network. At that time, we had a women's empowerment luncheon that I was at with women from across the country. And at that time, they had to interrupt the luncheon. Secretary Fudge was there also, as well as former United States Senator Hillary Clinton and some others. Also, the US Assistant Attorney General was there, and they had to interrupt the luncheon and said, the news has come in. Judge Katanji Brown Jackson has been confirmed. And the place erupted. So you always look at where were you when the news came in? And that was to be with women from all over the country. It was just amazing. People crying, People for Joy, Hazel Dukes, who is on the National Board of the NAACP, who is 90 years young, was there to see her in tears. It was just an incredible experience. So wanted to, to highlight that. The other thing I had a chance to speak today at the 20th anniversary of the collaborative agreement, I want to thank Vice Mayor Jan Michelle Lemon Kearney for inviting me. It was put together by the city and Iris Rowley put the, the event together. But to be able to talk about 20 years ago, and I was 20 years younger, 20 years ago, was very young and had to deal with a very difficult time in our city and Cincinnati is in our county. And being able to talk about how we had to come together and bring this, the citizens, the police together, the faith-based community, and come out with a collaborative agreement. I was the vice mayor at that time, and the mayor was out of town. And I got the call that the, the discussions and negotiations were breaking down. I was in my twenties and had on Adidas tracks sweatsuit because I was working out. And I just remember driving over to Xavier where they were meeting and saying, Lord, just give me the words to keep it together because I didn't want us to fall apart. And once I got there, Judge Delott then said, I kept it together. And I thought, wow, now I'm done. And she said, no, you're going to be in the negotiations until the end. And so just to be in that federal court and having all of the entities, the FOP, the Black United Front, the City of Cincinnati, and having to negotiate all those components and then get every civil rights group, once we got a deal, every civil rights group had to sign off on it, also had to get FOP to sign off on it, and then had to get a 9-0 vote in council. And anybody knows about city council, that's a tough thing to get on a tough issue. And was able to get that done. And United States Attorney General at that time, John Ashcroft, who was a Republican, came to town and signed this deal. So we had everything from Democrats, Republicans, to police, community, to activists, to city officials. And this became a model. At the time, we didn't know it was going to be a model. We were just trying to bring it together and have a blueprint. And it became a blueprint. And then my years at the state legislature, as these things started to spread across Ohio and around the country, the governor said, hey, you've got some experience. How do we have something in Ohio? And Ohio was one of the first states to have use of four standards done by an executive order. I was president of Black Caucus, and it's called the Ohio Collaborative. So that was done today. And all the people that were involved, many people are still involved in making sure that our city and our county is someone that works together. So that was great. And I just want to commend the work of Cincinnati City Council, as well as Iris Rowley and others who put that together today. So those, I was in an opening day parade with also my colleagues. It was a great parade. We had a great parade. And certainly, we're hoping to have a better season. So that's all my comments for the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. I'm going to open with the opening day parade because it was good fun and we were all in it. The crowd was huge. We haven't done it for a while. So it was exciting to be out with the people and hanging out and celebrating the Reds. I actually went to the game afterwards, which was a little bit less exciting than the parade. It was exciting to, up to a point. And then we were like, wait a minute, wait a minute, what's going on? But we will hope the spring's eternal with the Reds and the Bengals. And so our optimism is sometimes rewarded. So I continue to be optimistic about the Reds and their, in their season. But it was just fun to be out with people and celebrating the iconic Cincinnati Reds on opening day. I too went to the OKI meeting and took away also this idea of charging stations, because there is so much energy, if you will, behind this idea that we need to start moving into the future when it comes to vehicles and, you know, green energy. And so we did talk about this last week very briefly about how we as a commission, as policymakers, need to start to think through, when is the best time for us to start to convert our fleet? Whether it's an engineer's vehicle or another vehicle, we need to start thinking through that. And I do wonder if there's some federal dollars available for not only the public charging stations, which is what they were talking about, and having them along, especially the highways, but also charging stations to the benefit of the city and the county for our own fleet. So something that I hope we will pursue, because as we move forward, you know, it's common. And I think we are going to try to be on the lead when it comes to doing all things green. We've been on the lead with our facilities, and I'm hoping we can get there with our vehicles as well. Two other things. One is that I want to thank the administration for presenting the recommendations about the American Rescue Plan to the commission. We got, I think we got them yesterday. I'm looking forward to digging through that. And I understand we're having a Tuesday staff meeting to talk through those recommendations so that we can start to invest those dollars in the county, whether it's housing or mental health or youth development. I'm very, very excited about the opportunity that exists for the whole community, really, as we continue to have this community conversation about these investments. And I'm also wondering, Madam President, I don't know if this is on the radar, but this feels like one of those moments, often like a budget moment, where we might want to have a public hearing to gain information from the public related to the recommendations. And so I'm just offering the idea of a public forum, you know, public hearing related to the recommendations so that we can continue to gather input. We had those, the groups of individuals, really the experts, help us formulate the recommendations. But I think there's probably an opportunity to increase our knowledge base by going out and doing a public hearing. So hopefully we can get that done between the timeframe of, you know, sometime after Tuesday, after we hear from the administration and before we need to pass anything by way of these dollars. And then lastly, I was going to talk about the historic appointment of Katanji Brown Jackson to the Supreme Court. And it folds into, my only announcement of the day is that the Pay Equity Commitment signing is next week. It's April 20 at 3:30 at the Downtown Library. And we have all received an email from Mary Mountie, who is leading the charge for the Commission on Women and Girls, asking all of us to reach out to any business, nonprofit, government, agency that might want to sign on to the Pay Equity Commitment. And then we will have a signing that day. We're all hopefully going to be there and celebrate and congratulate those that were signing on to the commitment. I know the county is doing it and I, the city will be there as well. So I just wanted to put that on the radar too. Next Wednesday, April 20 at 3:30 at the Downtown Library. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we certainly can consider as a board, having more public input. As was mentioned earlier, we did have stakeholders that were intricately involved in this process of how we spend our ARP money. But as we review it, the new packet that we received, we certainly can look at involving our residents because it's their money, it's our money. And we want to not only have the stakeholders involvement, what we can consider when we want to do that. I just wanted to bring up, Vice President Reese brought up about Justice Katanji Brown, and that I would be remiss if I did not bring up how blessed I was to be in the hearing room on her second day of the hearing. And I had the opportunity to do that. And as I walked in the room, I could feel her pride, her, I could hear her intellect. I could also feel her strength. And I also realized it was her assignment to be the first. And I am so proud of her. And I just knew that it was, well, I knew it was going to happen. And just the opportunity to be in the room and sit right behind her almost is something I'll never forget. So being the first commissioner, and she's the first, of course, justice, being the first sometimes is not easy. But I'm sure she'll be able to handle it well. So I'm glad that that was finally validated, what she was already assigned to do. Okay.
Yes. I also want to acknowledge, I know earlier was talked about Pastor Casey Smith. I know that it was said that he supports the music festival and Black Music Walk of Fame and all that. But I just wanted to acknowledge that he did arrive. I know he's not asked to speak, but I just wanted to acknowledge his presence.
Absolutely. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Yeah. Okay, we will move forward. Our County Commissioner Jeff Alito.
Thank you, Madam President. So I've got three, no comments today, just three byleaves in your packet. I'll start with by leave number one. This is an item that was referenced as a resolution authorizing the administrator to negotiate and enter into a funding agreement by and between to negotiate and enter into a funding agreement by and between the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, Ohio, and the Santangelo Group Incorporated regarding a large event grant. This, as the board is very well aware, a large event grant was budgeted in the 2022 general fund budget at a total amount of 1.5 million. The purpose of the grant was to provide economic support for those major events in the community that that are hosted in the community and that drive significant economic activity, economic development, and specifically tourism to the county. In particular, making sure those large events in the community are strong as we emerge from the pandemic of COVID. The large event grant was advertised in March. Applications were due on March the twenty fifth. We are taking these many times for a grant. We'll wait until they're all in. We'll do all the analysis, we'll do all the contracting, we'll bring them all to all in together because of the nature of this grant and because these these events are occurring at different times. We wanted to be sensitive to that, and so we were bringing these forward on a rolling basis to the board. So the first application that we received was from the Cincinnati Music Festival. This event is occurring downtown at Paul Brown Stadium and around Paul Brown Stadium, July twenty first to the twenty third, after a two-year COVID hiatus. Most, most everyone in the community knows this as a typical annual event, notwithstanding a pandemic, pulling in close to eighty thousand attendees annually. Most of those coming from outside the community, anywhere from California to Florida. The grant application in particular requests $690,000. Four hundred and fifty thousand of that for performance, for performers, twenty thousand for marketing, thirty thousand for equipment rental, a hundred thousand for security and staffing, fifty thousand for general liability. There is support for the co-occurring five one three festival occurring out in the ancillary portions of the the festival, down on the on the banks at twenty five thousand. And also funding for some performances ancillary to the festival at the Black Music Walk of Fame at fifteen thousand. So we are in the final stages of an agreement with the Santangelo Group on this, on this project. The resolution before you today gives me the authority to execute that agreement, consistent with the terms of the grant and the funding amounts in the grant. Once that agreement is approved to form by the prosecutor's office, which I understand is really imminent. We just don't have it today, but we wanted to move forward and get the authority to sign off on. That I have the authority to sign off on it so that we can execute it once that agreement is approved as to form. With that, I know that the Santangelo Groups representatives Fran and Joe Santangelo, I believe, are out of town but are on Zoom today if there are any specific questions for the the event holders themselves. Also Holly Christman is here. If there's any questions, Assistant Administrator Holly Christman, if there are any questions about the specifics of the grant application process, we're happy to answer those. Commissioners, I'll turn it to your questions at this point in time.
Thank you so much for that summary and clarification. I'd like to make a few comments. When we looked at the large event grant, as you were saying, we allocated 1.5 million for the grant, even though the criteria came out after we had allocated the money. I have many questions, not not about the Jazz Festival. We know it's a great activity. People come from all over the state, the region to to attend this. I've attended it several times myself. But anytime you look at $690,000, no matter who it is, you have questions. And I had many, many questions to make sure we were doing our due diligence as it relates to the expenditures. I know one of the criteria is that the group have an impact of at least forty million dollars. I like to read the whereas, the fifth whereas on our resolution. Whereas according to a study produced by UC Economic Center, previous occurrences of the event have attracted up to sixty thousand out of region and up to eighty thousand total attendees, created up to one thousand direct jobs, and generated up to an estimated 143.9 million economic impact for the greater Cincinnati region, including significant hotel tax and sales tax revenue for Hamilton County, which the board, the Office of Economic Development, and Santangelo Group fully anticipate will meet or exceed the previous occurrences of the event. I wanted to read that because the impact will be tremendous, as I said in this whereas in this resolution. And not only as we look at revenue, but we look at, we tried to help, we did help the small businesses three times, actually. Allocating thirteen point five million. This event provides a social and emotional impact along with an economical impact. So I'm willing to support by leave one. Those are all my comments. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. I've been attending the Jazz Festival now, Cincy Music Festival. Since I was seven years old. This festival has been around for fifty five years, fifty five years. It also is the number one, no matter what genre of music, number one annual economic impact for all of Hamilton County. The hotel tax that is sent to the CFA, we utilize the tax dollars. That's the people booking the hotels. We have used that for a number of other projects in Hamilton County. If you go now, most of the rooms are almost sold out in downtown Cincinnati, and they're moving out to the other areas. My only thing to the hotels, I know it's been two years, but let's don't try to make up all of it in one year. Let's keep these rates affordable. We don't want to go back to the days when we found rates jumping higher on that weekend than any other weekend. So let's don't do it in one year. We've got time. But this event has been down for two years, which has been suffering for us in terms of our CFA dollars coming in. And they bring in people from all over the country. It is also the oldest African-American music festival in the country. And so we've got people that we have to compete with. You've got Essence Festival down in New Orleans that popped up. You've got Louisville, which is our number one competitor now. They're trying to have a music festival in their new soccer stadium. And here we were positioned as the top and number one. We don't want to lose that. We want to maintain our position as number one. We want everyone to come from all over the country to Cincinnati. We've got groups, Chicago just takes over Cincinnati that weekend. Michigan takes over Cincinnati that weekend. And the county says cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. So to me, this is, even though it says large events, this is a tourism attraction. It will tie into our Black Music Walk of Fame because when people come, we could say, don't just come that weekend. Come on back. We're open three hundred and sixty-five days a year so that we can continue to have cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. My goal is to bring outside dollars as much as possible to reduce costs on local people. And so I just think this is a good investment, considering that we bring in a hundred and seven million dollars a year. I think that we get that two times. And I also think not including the earned media that we get on national and international acclaim. This year, we want to come in and show that we are strong, we are back. Come on in, book these hotels, eat in these restaurants, small businesses, come on so we can get you some connected, connect you with some money. But the thing I like about this is that it's annual. It's not a one-time thing, and then we've got to compete to try to get it another year or ten years from now. This is something that's every year. So when we did the budget. I was very supportive. I wanted to put some support toward this. That's one of the reasons all of us submit in the budget time what we'd like to do. There are some other large events that bring in tourism, hotel stays, like Blink that will be coming forward, and I support that as well. So, yeah, I'm excited about it. Happy to move forward with this. And also in this grant, I just want to acknowledge that there is a smaller grant in the grant. So there's a smaller festival, five one three relief festival. And Minister Taiba has been doing it for years. He's bringing in these vendors who also have to get hotels so that they can set up to vend. And many times they come in on a Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday. And once again, it's a cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. So I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
A portion is the five one three part.
The five one three festival is the part when you come out of the stadium on Freedom Way. And I don't know if he.
I mean, what, as far as financially, what part of the.
They said they would, they would help with some of the expenses of the five one three festival. Because the goal is, Madam President, as we have been saying, one of the goals is to have that music corridor. So that whole area, when you come out, will be the festival. You've got the Andrew Brady Center, you've got the five one three festival, and you've got the Walk of Fame. So to kind of keep the energy going there. So they will partner with five one three festival, and that five one three festival has been with them, I believe, two decades, twenty years. Will help get five one three festival back up and going because they've been down two years as well. So that would, I think that's the good thing about this grant, that they have some partnerships. Like you said, for some of the smaller minority businesses that can participate with them as well.
Okay.
Madam President, if I could just briefly, that that component was in the grant at $25,000.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad to see this item come forward. As has been stated, this was part of the budget process. And, you know, remember back when we were deciding and challenged related to the sales tax increase for the general fund. At that time, the commitment was to shore up county services to make sure that people were being paid a fair wage and hoping to attract employees to the county because we were going to have a more robust budget for that purpose. There was also a commitment at that time to do some economic development work, whether it was out in the forty-nine jurisdictions or towards some of these bigger events that really create a lot of economic development opportunities for the county. And so as we were all contemplating the budget. I was happy to introduce a couple of those items to the mix related to not only the community development, which were up to three million for those grants, those revitalization grants out in the community with the one million impact grant, but also this 1.5 for larger investments towards these really big events that generate all this income for the county. And so I think it's a good idea. I think it shows that the county wants to be a partner when it comes to these large events. The city has been in this space for a while. The county has not played as active a role as the city. And so I think this shows our commitment to be partners when it comes to the music festival, when it comes to Blink, when it comes to whoever else applies and is eligible for this money. Because it doesn't have to be the same group year after year. It could be, but it doesn't have to be. And I do want to say on this particular item, I too have been going to the music festival back when it was the Jazz Festival many years ago, and I remember that because I had just had my daughter, who is now thirty-five. I went to this festival right after I had my daughter. That was probably not my best move because I was still not in great shape, but I went anyway because I wanted to and was sitting way up in the red stadium, way, way up in the red seats. But anyway, it was good fun and have attended a few times since then and think it is just a wonderful celebration for the city. And so I'm happy to support the resolution.
Yes.
I think the Santangels are on, they may want to say something. I'm not sure. On Zoom.
I don't know. This is Joe Santangelo. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Well, no, I would just like to say that I am very appreciative of your considering our request. And I'd like to say that it couldn't come at a better time. As you noticed, as you have all said, we, you know, we've been down for two years, which has put quite a hardship on us. And what we're noticing this year in our startup is that, I mean, our costs are just skyrocketing. I mean, they are, they're going well and above from, you know, we went out and hired the most expensive artists that we've ever had on the festival in all of our fifty-five years. And I'm speaking about Janet Jackson, obviously. And in addition to that, we have a great lineup in addition to just her. And but so not only our artist costs, but all of our associated costs are dramatically increasing in this this year. If I could give you one quick example. Last year, in addition to our general liability insurance, we buy what I call cancellation insurance. So were there to be a terrible thunderstorm or whatever, a weather-related event that would cause the event to be canceled, you know, we would be protected. In 2019, the cost for that insurance was about forty thousand dollars. In 2022, the estimate I received is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So, you know, it, and this is the kind of thing, straight across the board that we're looking at. We feel that our event staffing costs are going to be way up this year because the only way we can get the number of people that we need to adequately staff the festival to make sure everyone is safe. And I'm always, I've always been a proponent of more security rather than less that we need to pay, you know, probably twenty to thirty percent more per hour to all of the people. So, you know, the timing of this couldn't be better from our point of view. And once again, I would just like to say I'm very appreciative for for being for being included in this. And I'm very appreciative for all three of you county commissioners voicing your support for this.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comments. I think this large event grant is an example of when we were looking at our budget. We did not want to leave any stone unturned. And as I said earlier, how we have helped everyone. We have assisted everyone to kind of bring themselves up to almost where they used to be. So this just falls in line with what our priorities are as a commission. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number two in your packet is a resolution awarding construction contracts for the concrete structures and park finishes for Phase Three C of the banks. You remember a few weeks ago, a month ago or so. We had to reject bids that came in for specific projects at the banks because they were over the engineer's estimate. Phil Beck did a great job in leading the team in a in an effort to reform that that package, get it back out on the street and get bids back in that were within our tolerances on acceptance. So Phil is here today to provide a little bit of background on both of the contracts here and to, we ultimately will make a recommendation for the board to approve. Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Phil Beck, Banks Project Executive. As Jeff mentioned, this is kind of step two of three steps for this phase of the Banks Project. We are in the final days and weeks of finishing the foundation work currently. That should be pretty well wrapped up by the end of this month. So that sets the the pile caps and the initial walls. And so this, this package that you're looking at today has two trade contracts. The first of the two takes off where the foundations left off. So this will bring up the the podium, which is a stair-stepping podium. As you know, we're joining the upper elevation coming out of the Andrew J. Brady Music Center and then stepping down to Merron Way and Elm Street, that elevation. It's a fourteen-foot differential. So the the park, if you will, is designed with a stair step and the ramp structure. So all that concrete work that I just described, and then the second trade contract that's included here is the park itself. So all the park finishes, basically taking the public component of this to completion. And that includes all of the, anything that is required to then accept the the interactive elements for the Black Music Walk of Fame. And that will be the step three of three steps. So that is coming shortly.
Thank you so much. I don't have any questions or comments, but Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you. I'm excited that the bids came in the right way. I'm hopeful that I'm, I've been going down there, so I'm, you know, I see a lot of work being done on it and moving. And so this will help us move to that next phase to get what we need. So I'm excited about it and looking forward to passing this and looking forward to the interactive component. I guess my question is, on the. I guess my question is, on the interactive, when will that piece come?
I'm hoping to get that to you within a week or so.
Okay, and then that's the last phase, and then everybody can get kind of just keep moving.
Yes, everything will be under contract at that point.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You indicated you're getting it to us in a week. What is getting, what, the plans, the design for, to us in a week?
It's actually the um, the uh, we're working with, let me put it this way, working with consultants that aren't necessarily used to working in the public environment. So um, we just want to make sure we are, we're um, digging into all of the costs that are associated so that everything is transparent. That's, that's what we're in the process of doing, so that we can then come to an agreement as a project team um, on, on a good, solid recommendation to you all to approve.
So that would be the final cost you would get to us in a week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Greenhouse. Yeah, Phil, can you just um, tell us when I, so you've got kind of two things going on here. You've got the infrastructure being built, and then you've got what's on top. How does what's on top interface with what's already there? And by that, I mean the park that is nearby and the finishes that are there. Um, are they consistent with what we have seen throughout the rest of the park?
Yes, and, and they are also a slight departure. Um, so they are consistent in that it's the same materials. We're talking stainless steel railings, granite, um, um, you know, granite pavers, granite on vertical elements. But in this case, this corner is sort of setting itself apart slightly, and that some of the colors used are new and, and different, not radically, but you know, they, they set themselves apart. Uh, we have a water feature um, that uh, Parks has used in the past, as you know, particularly at, at Vine and Walnut Street steps. And so we, but they've sort of gotten away from those water features because uh, they can be problematic. So we're taking all of their lessons learned into the design of, of our wa- water feature and, and incorporating that. And then, of course, the, the interactive elements that will go into the park are completely new.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that the interactive stuff will be very different from what the rest of the park looks like. I just, I know there is a common look or uh, by way of the materials that are used. I just want to make sure that that common look um, is carried through to this. And then the interactive elements will be in addition to, right, all that other, and will be very different from the rest of the park. I, I understand that. This was, because I've been asked about um, some of the materials that are being used. I think you've mentioned the granite uh, and some of the other stuff. And I just, I, I assume that that's being carried through to this space.
Yes, and as a matter of fact, um, you and I have an appointment tomorrow, two o'clock, to go over the materials. Um, I was going to set those up in room 603, and I'm in the process of trying to schedule a, a date and time uh, with the other Commissioners to do the same thing. Um, I have renderings that show where the materials will go, and then I have actual physical um, samples of the, the granite. And we can put that next to the terrazzo that's used in the stars to kind of imagine what that look will be.
Madam President. Is it, were you done?
I think so.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Madam President, I just want to say, we may have a difference of opinion. I don't want the Walk of Fame to be bland. The park is bland, a lot of brown. I suffer from migraines, so you go down there, you got a brown river, you got a lot of brown, a lot of gray. The Walk of Fame is supposed to be a tourism attraction that has music and has attraction. And it, and so I'm, I'm not, that's the reason that we didn't want um, the, you know, parks in the city. They are not, that's why we wanted to get the deed, we went to get the deed. So I haven't had anybody call me from Parks or anywhere else, but I just want to be clear. I don't want a brown doll, nothing that pops. It's just like Paul Brown Stadium or the, the Red Stadium. Red Stadium ain't, we're all brown. Um, and so I just think that this has to have some more creativity. This cannot be just some uh, which is more expensive, actually, that material that's used for the Andrew. Andrew Brady, it's creative, because the building, you're not looking at the ground, you're looking at the building. This, you will be looking at the ground. It's already uh, the Walk of Fame, number one, is only a half acre. We gave 196 and a half other acres for everybody else. It's only a half acre. And I just want to be clear on this. I don't think it's the expert. I don't like it. I don't like all that brown down there. I don't want an Albert Saban old convention center. Even the new part of Convention Center, they didn't go with the brown. The old part went with the brown. So I disagree with that, and I don't want the Walk of Fame to be dull. It can't be seen. It's already enough that the majority of the cost of this Walk of Fame is not the Walk of Fame. It's a garage. Majority of the cost is on the garage. The Walk of Fame is only six million, and underneath all that garage is almost 13 million dollars for the garage. So please, I hope this will have flavor, because it's got to have flavor. That's what these musicians was about, flavor. It's got to have some flavor, and it's got to be current. And I don't want it to be just some blue ribbon uh, brown and all. I mean, some people like it, I don't like it. The river's brown. The trees are brown right now. I want to see some, some, you know, we got, we're bringing, we're going to pay a lot of money for Blink to come in to bring lights and all this great stuff. I want the Walk of Fame to be that on a permanent basis. So I do want to put that out there. Um, you know, I put a lot into this, I'm down there all the time. I've, 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 I don't, went all the way up and down this. It's 198 acres, and it's not one thing African-Americans really have, except the Freedom Center. So it's only a half acre, and I would hope that this half acre, we not gonna had the Black Music Walk of Fame. We not gonna dull it down. This is not meant to be Smale Park. This is not Smale Park. This is to be interactive and fun and colors and vibrancy. And the only thing we gonna have is the ground. We're already in the flood plain. Someone came down there the other day, I think it was uh, a 3CDC, Leaper came, that's, oh, you, you got, you in the flood plain. We, I mean, so please, I hope that we're not going to, at least I'm not going to support it. Dulling it down, and I've done a lot of work on it. I want this to be something that people want to come from around the world. And it brightens your day, and it lights up, and it looks good. And I think uh, standards is a matter of opinion. I don't think that brown looked that good to me. I'm just, I'm gonna be honest with you. A brown river with brown, nah, it don't do much for me. So I just think it's a matter of opinion. I hope that um, the drawings that you provided us, I, I think you staying in that circle would be a lot more appropriate. So I just want to be on record, I want to be out in the open. I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna be out in the open, and I'm just gonna be honest. It's a matter of opinion. This is not Smale River Park. We done gave you 196 and a half other acres. This is only half acre. And standards, you know, that's a matter of opinion, and I think this is gonna be world class.
Can I, just to clarify my comments, um, I'm not talking about dull, nor am I talking about brown. I'm talking about quality. I, I want to make sure that the quality that has been used in um, the rest of the uh, park is the same quality. And, and so up to, I, I, I don't know that standard is exactly the right word, but I don't want it to be any less than um, you know, the quality of the rest of the park. And then the interactive elements obviously will be very different and, and energetic and lively and light. Um, but I just want to make sure that we're building this uh, infrastructure uh, to the same quality that we've done the rest of the park. That's all I was getting at. I, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, no, no, I, I got you, but I want to clarify, wait a minute, quality, that was a hit. I gotta just say.
Let her finish, please.
No, I, I, it's, it's not a, a, about the look of it at all. It's about the quality of the material.
Well, I just want to clarify that, because everything I do is quality. I started quality, I worked my way up. When we talk about these garages, Finley Market and everything, I've never heard the thing about what's the materials? Is it going to be quality? But when you get to the Walk of Fame, we ask about quality, so I want to be straight with this thing. Just because it's the Black Music Walk of Fame, don't mean it ain't quality. It's gonna be better quality. Better quality. So I just want to, no, I just wanted to put that out there, because I don't want it leaning out there like, oh, it's quality. We build stuff every day, every week you bring me stuff, we building something. I ain't never heard about, what is the materials? I don't know the materials over at Finley Market. I don't know if it's quality. I don't know the materials that we have on these other things. But I will tell you that it will be quality, and I don't want to have that question again, because I don't think this board, we have voted for anything that wasn't quality. And if it had anything to do with me, I'm just going to tell you, my whole life, I started quality and worked my way up. This is not my first rodeo. So I just wanted to, but the look of it is important, the look and feel is what I was.
Right. And I think the look and feel for all of us is important. And uh, whatever word we choose to use to, to make sure that's something that we all agree on, because we all have to vote on it. As you was, as you were saying earlier, you're going to meet with Commissioner Treehouse, you'll be meeting with both of us. And if we see something we don't like or would like to have enhanced or wha- whatever, that we certainly can make that suggestion. That's the purpose of uh, of the meeting, so.
There's time to make adjustments if needed.
Yeah, absolutely. So whatever we do, uh, the county, we want high quality. Uh, so, and nothing is void of that, including the Walk of Fame. Um, I'd like to make a motion uh, to approve by leave two, which would award the construction contracts.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Uh huh. By leave three.
There are. Um, Madam President, uh, by leave number three uh, is a resolution authorizing the County Administrator to enter into first agreement, first amendment to the agreement uh, with the Council on Aging of Southwestern Ohio regarding the use of senior services tax levy proceeds. As the Board knows, we have an agreement uh, with Council on Aging uh, that relates to the use of the, of the uh, levy proceeds that are derived from uh, the senior services levy. Um, uh, the amendment here is specifically for two purposes. One is to uh, add home workforce recruitment strategies and also a program uh, at the direction of the Board. Also included in the 2022 budget uh, for uh, utility assistance and home modification services. Uh, this is included as an amendment in the, in the uh, Services Agreement with Council on Aging. Uh, Lisa Webb is here, um, and Lisa had presented on this uh, several weeks back. So this is the culmination of that work. I believe it is consistent uh, with the presentation provided by Lisa a few weeks ago. Um, it was ready as of yesterday, essentially, and we discussed it and uh, uh, wanted to bring it by leave today for the Board's consideration, as uh, Council on Aging, I believe, has said that they are ready at the approval once we fire the starting gun here to start serving senior residents. And we didn't want to wait any, uh, any day longer than we needed to in order to get that done. So Lisa, I'll turn it over to you if there's anything to, to add and to the Board for questions.
Absolutely. This is the Senior Utility Program that was presented to the Commissioners last month of the million dol- million $25,000 that was um, allocated in the Senior Services Levy to fund the pilot of this program for this year. Uh, it provides one-time utility assistance payments of up to $500 and home modifications for Hamilton County residents aged 60 plus, regardless of disability and living arrangement, if they are under 300% of poverty and not eligible for other assistance programs. Uh, one of the key pieces there, just to note, as we're launching this program, is regardless of living arrangement, which means if you are living with uh, with a family member and are not on the deed for the property or on the lease arrangements, you could still qualify for this program, which is very unique from other programs, as well as the uh, higher income eligibility requirements or, or bracket available. Uh, it also includes marketing services and outreach services by a local grassroots organization to go out in the community and try to get more people enrolled in this program, to do as many as we can with the amount of funding that we have allocated. Uh, there's also one other small modification to this amendment as well, which allows for Council on Aging to spend some of their funding on home care workforce recruitment, which has been a struggle for them recently and allows them to focus on that. Uh, that is what we have prepared. That's the amendment. The only addition I would add is I've reached out to COA, um, and they have a dedicated phone line that they're going to be using for enrollment in this program. You can call the COA other lines, but if you call 743-9000, you will get directly uh, speaking with agents that can enroll you and do all the criteria and eligibility for this program specifically.
That is great. Thank you so much for your presentation. I want to thank you yesterday for the meeting we had together. You were fantastic as it relates to the, the levies and, and clarification, and I can't wait to pass this. Um, seniors, we know, need so much additional help. And then the, how you qualify is always so sticky. So this is, we, we're more lenient on this. I was wondering, as far as the money is in there for marketing and advertisement, who would actually be doing that with the?
Uh, Council on Aging is contracted with, um, it's slipping names. SOAC, thank you, SOAC for the grassroots organization.
Okay, okay. Fancy, this is great, and we wanted it as a.
And Council on Aging is ready. They've been getting phone calls, they've been hearing about it through the media, so it's getting out there. People have been calling COA already, so they've been cataloging all of those individuals. So once this is approved, they will be able to launch right away.
That's great. Thank you so much for your work. To Vice President Reese.
Thank you. This is awesome. Thank you for your work. Um, um, Madam President and Commissioner Treehouse, uh, we, I think we had a staff meeting where they got a chance to present, and some of the seniors did come down. Um, and so I guess this is the step of, I think we gave, all of us gave some input, and there were a few tweaks. Um, so I'm excited to get this started. Uh, the only thing I would ask, when we get the phone number and uh, somehow we'll, all of us have it, but also get it out on our website. So uh, we have somewhere to.
Talking with Bridget already to.
Oh, great, yes. So I'm excited about this. Uh, there's something came from our seniors, and I just think this is a very positive thing for seniors who haven't been able to be eligible for help uh, with the cares or the American Rescue uh, dollars for their uh, utilities. And I think it's just great, this partnership with Council on Aging uh, as well as SOAC that can go in and also be one-on-one with helping seniors know about this service. So I'm excited about it and uh, supportive and ready to get started as soon as you get the phone number out to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Treehouse. Yeah, I'm, I'm excited about this too. I'm happy to support it. Um, can we put that phone number on our website, I wonder? I know Bridget's not in the room, but.
Sure, we can.
Yeah, let's, let's make sure.
I just got that today, so I'm happy to push that out all over.
Pushed out far and wide, so.
COA also does qualifications for a lot of other assistance programs too. So if there's anything else out there they qualify for, they'll definitely be directing them to that as well.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this to us.
Thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion very proudly of by leave three, to approve by leave three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to our regular agenda items. Our engineer has been waiting patiently. Eric Beck, welcome.
Good afternoon. Um, just two items in for you today. Item number one is a resolution between the city and the county to extend our bridge agreement uh, with the city. This extension would be, would take it till December 31st, 2026. This agreement's been in place for over 20 years. It, it authorizes um, the county engineer to pay $1 million out of municipal road funds annually to maintain the county bridges with inside the city limits.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, when you said $1 million out of our?
Municipal road funds.
Right.
Yeah.
So the, the resolution, I don't have it with me, but it has in there where that 1 million is coming out of the road fund.
Correct.
Vice President Reese? No questions? Make a motion to approve item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a vacation request from Sycamore Township. It's a submitting of the county engineer's report to, for you for, to receive for the record. Um, we will contact utilities and uh, the adjoining property owners. We've reviewed it, and uh, it is eligible to be vacated, so this did come from the trust township trustees. If they, we've sent them a letter with the requirements. When we get all that information back, should we get that back and it's acceptable, then we'll bring it for a hearing.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions? Make a motion to receive for the record item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move forward to our consent agenda items, um, items three through 14, just a general summary. Um, let's see, we have uh, grants that were allocated that if we approve to probation, environmental services, and the Justice Center facility improvement for 10,000 uh, 10 million, 10,000, I mean, and I could put my glasses on one. Then we have, I'm, I'm sorry, so for 10 million. Bid awards and contracts also are authorized and executed by our purchasing department for the month of March for 3 million. Um, and then JFS uh, has an agreement with um, Airmark for Food Service uh, 2800. Easter Seals uh, if approved, will receive um, $10,000 for their services that they conduct with Job and Family Services. Um, also, there are two replacement vehicles that JFS is uh, asking for um, for 38. Also, there are two replacement vehicles that JFS is asking for, for thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight nine. And let's see what else sticks out. Maybe item eleven might stick out a little bit. We are appointing our, our new clerk of courts, clerk of county clerk in the office. See, you were looking at me and Ms. Leslie Ervey, and we may say a little bit more after that, but item eleven. And then item twelve, we have an agreement through Hamden County Sheriff's and Job and Family Services for criminal screening for seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then a hundred thousand more for group home services through JFS. I would just like to make a comment about item eleven, and then also we have fourteen, which is a consent item on their Hammond County Municipal Court annual report. But Leslie Hervey has been our interim clerk for, for just a little while since Jackie Paniotto left. And we went through a thorough interview process. We had about a hundred and fifty applicants, and it came, narrowed it down to half a dozen. And then she interviewed along with two other finalists, and we're happy, if, if approved, we're happy to have her become our permanent clerk of the board. So I will open it up if you have any questions or comments on the consent items.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, I thought the interview process that the three of us had, I want to thank HR for putting that together along with our administrator, Jeff Aludo. And had a very good interview process. I want to congratulate Leslie. She did a very good interview and just happy to have you as our clerk. So just wanted to highlight that. That was my first time going through that type of process, and I thought it was a very good process that the three of us were a part of and helped lead. The other thing that I wanted to put out, I haven't put together a motion or anything yet, but I wanted to put it out there. I know we've been talking a lot about energy efficient cars and those kind of things. And every week we are, you know, asked to approve purchasing of different vehicles and fleet. And I don't know, I wanted to see maybe our administrator, if he could maybe get something together for all three of us to look at and see, is there anything that we could be doing as it relates to as we're beginning to buy new cars? Or is there availability to find these electric cars to start to look at our fleet and be able to include them in the fleet and start turning some of this over a little bit better? So I don't have a motion today, but I did want to put that on the table. And maybe there's something that our administration can at least look at and maybe provide a plan to, to us to look at, to see if we can begin to do that. Because every week I know we're buying different vehicles for different departments. And I, I know that maybe the sheriff's department, that might be difficult because we want those cars to be able to go really fast. But maybe as some of these other cars, we might be able to start to look at, you know, what, what would that cost? Was the long term, was the short term? So that we can begin to have more, more of these electric style cars in our fleet. If, if possible, I'd like to at least get some kind of report and maybe at a staff meeting or something, something can be presented to us in the, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we look at purchasing more electric cars, also we need to include the training component of it because as Mr. Beck was saying, a lot of people are not trained in how do you maintain those, those cars. But it will be happening, that's for sure. Okay, did you have any comments, Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes, I do. I wanted to comment on item number three. This is the item, the ten million dollar item, where we are getting to this issue of safety over in the Justice Center. We've had some challenges with holes in the windows. And so this item is the allocation or the, the start down the road to bring that allocation to the county so we can start to fix those windows and other, some other safety concerns at the Justice Center. So I want to thank the administration for bringing this as quickly as possible to us because I think we're all concerned about the safety of the inmates in addition to the corrections officers over at the Justice Center. And I also wanted to congratulate Leslie Hervey. Welcome is not the right word, since you've been with us for I don't know how many years, but we really appreciate all your efforts trying to keep us in line and trying to keep our agendas in line. And you have been a real asset to the county, and I'm thrilled that you're going to continue on in the role of the county clerk.
Thank you. Did you want to speak or did you, no, she said no. Okay, I'd like to make a motion, motion to approve items three through fourteen.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. We have before us an executive session. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section one twenty-one point twenty-two G three, to meet with an attorney for the public body concerning pending litigation.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.